Recording in progress.
Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call Pastor Leato from New Life Church to come up and give invocation. Should have a green light on the microphone, sir.
There we go. Can you hear me okay? There we go. If you would please stand this morning, if you're able, or evening, sorry. Eternal merciful God, source of all wisdom and compassion, we come before you today with hearts full of gratitude for the opportunity to serve the people of Watertown. We ask your blessing upon the mayor, the city council, its leaders, the police officers and firefighters, as well as all who dedicate themselves to the welfare of our community. Grant them discernment to navigate complex challenges, courage to uphold justice, and humility to listen to the voices of all they represent. May their decisions reflect a commitment to unity, fairness, and the flourishing of every resident in our beloved city. Inspire us to honor Watertown's rich heritage and vibrant spirit, working together to build a future filled with hope, where opportunity continues to grow and mutual respect for all who live in this great city. Guide our words and actions today that they may sow seeds of peace and progress for generations to come. In your holy presence, we pray. Amen.
Okay, if we can take a roll call, please?
Davis?
Here.
Mampie?
Here.
Berg?
Here.
Barks? Blanky?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Arnett?
Here.
Wetzel?
Here.
Mildenhauer?
Here.
Okay, you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, first on the agenda, minutes of the council meeting from May twentieth. Motion by Arnett. Second. Second by Blanky. All's in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Next, we have comments and suggestions from citizens present. We do have a couple of public hearings as well, so if you're here for the public hearing to comment, you can wait till that section next. If you wish to comment, please state your name and address in the microphone, and you have up to three minutes. There'll be a timer going off at three. If the timer goes off, just kind of finish your thoughts, please. Megan?
Christopher Ross.
My name is the Reverend Dr. Christopher Ross. I live in Cottage Grove, but I serve here in Watertown as pastor of First Congregational United Church of Christ. My pronouns are he, him, his. And I am part of the local group known as Building a Welcoming Watertown, first begun by four Watertown area congregations. We rise to speak because too many folks have been kept in the cold this past winter while the city has done far too little. While too many in the city that you govern have either frozen to death or come frighteningly close. And we challenge the frequent unwelcome message this city sends to supposed outsiders. When anyone finds themselves in danger of freezing to death, that is on all of us. A proposal for a community overnight warming shelter based on a public-private partnership has now been submitted to the mayor. And so, we would like to remind you of some scriptural wisdom from the same source so many of you claim to espouse. Genesis twenty-three, four says, "I am a stranger and an alien residing among you. Give me property among you for a burying place so that I may bury my dead out of my sight." Exodus twenty-two, twenty-five says, "If you lend money to my people, to the poor among you, you shall not deal with them as a creditor; you shall not exact interest from them." Leviticus nineteen-ten says, "You shall not strip your vineyard bearer or gather the fallen grapes of your vineyard; you shall leave them for the poor and the alien. I am the Lord your God." Leviticus nineteen-fifteen says, "You shall not render an unjust judgment; you shall not be partial to the poor or defer to the great; with justice you shall judge your neighbor." Leviticus nineteen-thirty-four says, "The alien who resides with you shall be to you as the citizen among you. You shall love the alien as yourself, for you were aliens in the land of Egypt. I am the Lord your God." Leviticus twenty-three, twenty-two says, "When you reap the harvest of your land, you shall not reap to the very edges of your field or gather the gleanings of your harvest; you shall leave them for the poor and for the alien. I am the Lord your God." Leviticus twenty-five, twenty-five says, "If any one of your kin falls into difficulty and sells a piece of property, then the next of kin shall come and redeem what the relative has sold." Leviticus twenty-five, thirty-five says, "If any of your kin fall into difficulty and become dependent on you, you shall support them; they shall live with you as though resident aliens." Deuteronomy ten-nineteen says, "You shall also love the stranger, for you were strangers in the land of Egypt." Deuteronomy fourteen, twenty-eight through twenty-nine, we'll have to wait. Thank you.
Francine Geis.
My name is Francine Geis. I live at six oh nine West Main Street here in town. And I'm gonna start by reading what may seem as a rather odd choice of a poem on a warm, rather muggy evening, at least in here. But please bear with me, because it's relevant to my comments today. The poem is by Mike Howard from 2011 called "The Homeless Snowman." I saw a homeless person standing in the snow, was wrapped up in a blanket, he had nowhere to go. I thought about him all last night. I went back there with haste. No sign of the poor homeless man, a snowman in his place. I had taken hot soup and sandwiches, but snowmen do not eat. I took it for the homeless man. I thought it would be a treat. I looked upon the snowman. I seemed to know his face. Where had I seen that face before? I think it was his place. I went back home for Christmas, then suddenly understood it was not a snowman standing there. It was in that wintry wood. On rushing back to the snowman, I saw the Amthons crew. Thank God I'm not that snowman, a man I never knew. I'm reading this poem as we lost two lives here in Watertown last winter due to being unhoused. We nearly lost a third life, but it was thankfully spared because of the luck of a pure inquisitive little dog that found him first. While I think most know about the unhoused woman who was found dead downtown, I don't believe many others known in town realize that there was another death in a storage unit, which are often utilized by the unhoused to provide production against the elements. Nor are they aware that the person whom the dog discovered was also a person who did not have a stable home. We have a problem, like so many other cities all across the country, and it's getting bigger as rents continue to rise, utilities go up, just received that notice about the water bill here in town, and also food costs continue to soar. I am here today to ask you to support an initiative being brought forward to you in the very near future from the group Building a Better Watertown. We are proposing a public-private partnership with the city and faith-based organizations, as well as other groups and individuals, to ensure that the upcoming winter doesn't end in tragedy for anymore. Wisconsin winters can be brutal. Would you want to have to be sleeping on the street or in a vehicle? Being afraid to actually sleep because you're not sure you'll wake up in the morning. Or if you do wake up, you may still end up using a finger or a toe to frostbite. Even then, you have to work the next day after not having slept all night. Please, let's work together to make Watertown a better city. There comes a point where thoughts and prayers don't mean anything. We need action. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Barb West.
Good evening. My name is Barb Weiss. I live at eleven eighteen Riverview Lane in Watertown. My pronouns are she/her, and I am part of the local group known as Building a Welcoming Watertown, first begun by four Watertown area congregations. We rise to speak because too many folks have been kept in the cold this past winter while the city has done far too little. With too many in the city you govern have frozen to death or come frighteningly close, and we challenge the frequent unwelcome message this city sends to outsiders. When folks find themselves in danger of freezing to death, that's on all of us. A proposal for a community warming shelter based on a public-private partnership has now been submitted to the mayor. And so, we rise to remind you of some scriptural wisdom from the same source so many of you claim to espouse. Deuteronomy fourteen, twenty-eight through twenty-nine. Every third year, you shall bring out the full tithe of your produce for that year and store it within your towns. The Levites, because they have no allotment or inheritance with you, as well as the resident aliens, the orphans and the widows in your towns may come and eat their fill so that the Lord your God may bless you in all the work that you undertake. Deuteronomy fifteen, four through five. There will, however, be no one in need among you, because the Lord is sure to bless you in the land that the Lord your God has given you as a possession to occupy. If only you will obey the Lord your God by diligently observing this entire commandment that I command you today. Deuteronomy fifteen, seven and eight. If there is among you anyone in need, a member of your community and any of your towns within the land that the Lord your God has given you, do not be hard-hearted or tight-fisted toward your needy neighbor. You should rather open your hand willingly lending enough to meet the need, whatever it may be. Deuteronomy fifteen, ten and eleven. Give liberally and be ungrudging when you do so, for on this account the Lord your God will bless you in all your work and all that you undertake. Since there will never cease to be some and meat on the earth, I therefore command you, open your hand to the poor and needy neighbor in your land. Deuteronomy twenty-three, twenty-five. If you go into your neighbor's standing grain, you may pluck the ears with your hand, but you shall not put a sickle to your neighbor's standing grain. Deuteronomy twenty-four, fourteen, fifteen. You shall not withhold the wages of poor and needy laborers, whether other Israelites or aliens who reside in your land in one of your towns. You shall pay them their wages daily before sunset, because they are poor and their livelihood depends on them. Otherwise, they might cry to the Lord against you, and you would incur guilt. Deuteronomy twenty-seven, nineteen. Cursed is anyone who withholds justice from the foreigner, the fatherless, or the widow. Then all the people shall say, "Amen." First Samuel eight. He raises up the poor. Someone can finish that one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Elizabeth Fritz.
My name is Elizabeth Fritz. I live at one twelve North Maple Street, and I am the newly elected president of Building a Welcoming Watertown. As you've heard by now, we are concerned about our city's lack of preparation to meet the needs of the unhoused during extreme weather. Over the coming weeks, you will be hearing more about our proposal to partner with the city to provide a solution. For now, we ask that you approach this topic with an open mind and willingness to address this issue before next winter. In the spirit of faith-based community engagement, I will close by reading two passages from the scriptures that motivate us to act. Hebrews thirteen, sixteen. Do not neglect to do good and to share what you have, for such sacrifices are pleasing to God. First John three, seventeen and eighteen. But who hath this world's good and saith his brother had need, and shutteth up his bowels of compassion from him, how dwelleth the love of God in him? Let us not love in word, neither in tongue, but in word indeed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ron Bartles.
Come up, Ron.
Ron Bartles, eight-six-eight, Brentwood Lane. This isn't near as serious an issue as the folks just ahead of me. I want to know how they're gonna determine my water bill now that they took the deduct meters away. Now, I plan on water, but I would like to know, and probably, I didn't, a lot of, some of you know I was here, used to be here on a pretty regular basis, but I've got out of that habit, so it was probably discussed here at one of the meetings, and I didn't, and I don't get the paper nowadays. So, I'm just curious how they're gonna determine my water usage without the deductor for the water that does not go down to the sewer. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else? I don't see anybody. Okay. I'll move on to the public hearings. Open a public hearing for amendments to chapter five forty-five subdivision of land through amendments to sections five four five dash one four A and five four five dash four two C, five four five dash four two C and five four five dash five zero. If anybody wants to speak on that public hearing, you can come up to the microphone at this time. With a large crowd going up, I'll then close that public hearing. I'll open up the public hearing to amend chapter five fifty zoning code through the amendment of language to section five five zero dash one five zero. Okay, we'll then close that public hearing. Move on reports. We have public works minutes from May sixth, finance committee minutes from May twelfth, public works minutes from May thirteenth, and the downtown Main Street task force minutes from May twenty-seventh. Any questions on that? Mr. Bergen?
Mayor, I want to make some comments on the public works meeting from May thirteenth, and I had previously brought this topic up in concern to the topic of Hayden Pond and Victoria Lake, where they have obvious algae and an appearance that's unattractive and a problem that needs to be looked at. And I understood from our chairman that they are actually, the two ponds or lakes, whatever you want to call them, are deemed as being a ownership of the state. But in our own way, we are an agent of the state, a local entity, a local governing body like Watertown, so we have to address and deal with those issues where they do come to our attention. And I'm bothered by the increased appearance of them, and now Victoria Lake always had a nice look to it, but now that too has gotten bad on its condition. I saw a person that's one of the property owners, he told me that they need thirty-five hundred dollars to basically treat that particular lake, and they came to a meeting here, and their request for some kind of a partnership between the city and the property owners to share cost was listened to, and there was some sympathy to their point, but not received favorably with any kind of action taken. I'm bothered by that because when you look at stormwater utility, there's one point two million dollars in revenue that we generate from that fee on the part of people in our city. Those dollars are available for addressing issues that have some application, and this, these two ponds have a direct and indirect benefit of helping our city with runoff during flooding and that type of thing, and they have springs that actually, between the springs and the groundwater and the runner, the runoff that occurs from our community area, it actually contributes to the height and the condition of those two ponds. I was on the public works commission years ago as a chairman. We looked at this issue years ago. There's a cost to doing it, and there's a study that was done back then on that issue. I'm asking our chairman to relook at this, because the language in these minutes says that they're gonna revisit it for two thousand twenty-six. And in talking with Rod Welland today, who's one of the property owners, he's contributing money to try to fix the problem, but there's only seven property owners, and between them, they're not all contributing to this thirty-five hundred needed to treat that pond in a continuing way to get the algae to go away. There's a bigger problem there, but what I'm trying to get at with my minutes here is, I'm asking, in what it says here, no action taken. Talk about it for next year. And I feel this issue needs to be addressed in the meantime, because Umer Street is a very busy street. I go up and down this street a lot in the course of a day or a week. And every time you look to the north, you see these two ponds, and they look unattractive. And they reflect on our city in our own way, because we have an area where we can contribute to fixing, making it better than it currently is, so my request is for it to get relooked at and to use the stormwater utility money that are there to actually address this by contributing toward these costs, either through the treatment to make it look better, but also maybe on a bigger level as far as addressing the real problem in that with the two ponds. So, I appreciate listening. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Berg. Anybody else have questions or comments? Okay. Move on to communication, sorry, move on to reports. Communication recommendations. Watertown Fire Department want the report for April. New business, committee appointments. Mr. Berg?
Boy, I didn't plan on going bang, 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 back-to-back here, but on committee appointments, we've got one involving Steve Board, who is a quality individual and helps our community consistently when asked to be helpful. I did see that he's being recommended for appointment to be on the tourism board. I'm on that board. I know that he'll be an effective, helpful member. And I will vote reluctantly for him, only because I'd like to see us not continue to use existing people that have proven himself in a good way, but to broaden some of our ability to find new people that can actually contribute on these boards to give a stronger appearance of our democracy, being healthy and working with the people that want to help this town in different ways. The tourism board has a purpose to contribute to the well-being of our community, and people with that kind of a background, there should be someone that can actually contribute and help, other than Steve Board. But for now, I vote for him because he obviously stepped forward when asked, and he obviously can do the job. But I would encourage our mayor, and I would encourage people listening, to look at our website and to see where they can actually sign up as a volunteer to be on a committee or a board, so that in the future we have choices, and that people like Steve, you know, aren't always the answer to the problems we have of filling vacancies on committees and boards, that we need participation from our public.
Mr. Smith?
Mr. Mayor, I would move for the approval of your appointment to the Tourism Commission.
Okay, got motion by Smith. Got motion by Smith? Second by Wetzel? Any more discussion?
Smith?
Aye.
Arnett?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Molenhauer?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Lampy?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Blanky?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, thank you. Move on to ordinances. Orange twenty-five dash one-zero, amend chapter five fifty of the official zoning map to reflect the rezoning of eight forty-eight Milford Street of Edgefield Subdivision from single-family residential, SR four, to two-family residential, TR six. Sponsored by myself and the Planning Commission on its second reading.
Mr. Mayor, move for a second reading of twenty-five ten?
Got a motion by Arnett. Second by Blanky. Any comments?
Arnett?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Molenhauer?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Lampy?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Blanky?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Next, ordinance twenty-five dash one-one, amend section five hundred dash three B, stop intersections of the city of Watertown. General ordinance is sponsored by Alderman Davis from the Public Safety and Welfare Commission on its second reading. Ms. Davis?
I'll move forward, it's twenty-five dash eleven.
Motion by Davis. Second by Molenhauer. Any discussion or questions?
Davis?
Aye.
Lampy?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Blanky?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Arnett?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Molenhauer?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, thank you. On to resolutions. Exhibit nine seven five five, resolution to approve Vietnam Memorial Wall in Arrow Park, sponsored by myself and the Planning Commission.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move for ninety-seven fifty-five.
Motion by Blanky. Second by Barts. Any discussion?
Mayor, do you know a little bit more about this? Can you give us a little summary of how this became a reality?
Sure. Probably beginning of April, I was contacted by the American Legion, Steve Zilmer specifically, that they had the chance. There's three traveling Vietnam Memorial Walls. I was just kind of looking at the real ones past Saturday in DC too, but one was here, I think in two thousand eighteen at the airport for a while, drew a lot of people. So, we had a chance to purchase, at least the American Legion had a chance to purchase one of those, and they're planning to make it a permanent fixture. It is eighty percent the size of the one in DC, so in DC goes up to ten feet, this one goes up to eight. It's, they've got two sections of one hundred and sixty feet, so it'd be three hundred and twenty feet total. It's planning to go at Arrow Park, about where the parking lot is, and then up kind of close, almost to the property where there's a retention pond where the old Boomer Street used to be. It's going to be a pretty large project, all funded. They've got a lot of veterans organizations outside Watertown already giving money, so the VFW, the AMVETS, Marine Corps League, and American Legion are all working hard together on it, so it passed through Airport Commission and Site Plan and Plan Commission now, now it's in front of everybody in here. They're planning on trying to get a sign on the interstate, even, you know, it's possibly going to open up on Veterans Day in November, so it would probably draw a lot of people, even field trips for, from schools around the area. It's kind of a big thing that could happen, so I think the final approval is going to be coming soon. There is one thing with the airport, the airport's got, federal government asked okay the clearance there. It's going to be away from the structures and the bathrooms there now. It's going to be dug out, so I believe height-wise, it's going to stick up four feet, one thing, four feet high from what the grade is now, because you're actually going down a path and going down a few feet. Steps to be lit up. Pretty nice downlighting, I believe, so it won't affect any planes. They're going to put security cameras on too, so it can make sure it's watched, so nothing would happen to it.
Pretty impressive.
Yeah, it's, Ryan Hap, an honor of his father to do a lot of the work, pro bono also, yeah.
I was on the Airport Commission for four years, and I know that it took us forever to get the realignment of Boomer Street to actually go to the north, and that area that you're referring to was in sort of the encroachment area. That doesn't seem to be any kind of a deterrent or affecting the location.
No, it's over on the parking lot side away from the airport, so it should be fine and going through. Luckily, Ryan Hap's very familiar with the water system there too, and yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Blanky?
There's also a local connection to this one, that the person who etched the monument...
Engraving.
Yeah, the engraving. That person's actually from Watertown as well.
So, I believe he designed it in Minnesota is where he did the actual work. It's been in Texas for a while now, so he's actually the connection that was able to bring it to Watertown. He's actually the one that made it. So, actually, there's a Watertown grad gosling that actually stitched it out like twenty-five years ago, and he brought here.
Wow.
Yeah. What a good way to celebrate Veterans Day here in Watertown, right? I'm sorry, we're at, do we?
Call the question.
Mr. Arnett?
Call the question.
Call the question? Okay. We'll vote to call the question? Or is there any more debate? Okay, let's just voting. Mr. Arnett? Okay. I think so. We're all right.
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Arnett?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Molenhauer?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Lampy?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Yeah, thank you. Next, exhibit nine seven five six, resolution to approve the purchase of the HBA system for the wastewater administrative building, sponsored by Alderman Arnett and the Public Works Commission.
So moved.
Got a motion by Arnett. Second by Blanky. Okay. Any comment? Mr. Berg?
Just, if I could, the chairman, I didn't see it in the minutes, I might have overlooked it, but was there competitive bidding? A hundred and twelve thousand for an HVAC is obviously a big number, but that was competitively bid, and there was choices to pick from?
I could comment to that.
Go ahead.
If there was.
So, multiple bids?
Yes.
Okay.
Using multiple bids.
Thank you, Tim.
Hmm?
Thank you, yeah. Anybody else have a question or comment? Okay, Megan.
Arnett?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Molenhauer?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Lampy?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Blanky?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Exhibit nine seven five seven, resolution to approve purchase of a trailer-mounted high-pressure sewer jetter, sponsored by Alderman Arnett and the Public Works Commission.
So moved.
Motion by Arnett.
Second.
Second by Molenhauer. Any questions, comments?
Oh, I did, I'd like to make a comment. I was asked by the Public Works Commission to provide some information on warranty for this unit. I just got that information earlier today, so I was unable to add it on to the agenda here, but it does have warranty, there's a two-year warranty on the engine, and there is a one-year warranty on the rest of the entire trailer and all of its components and the jetting equipment and things like that, so.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay. I think we're good, Megan.
Arnett?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Molenhauer?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Lampy?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Blanky?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay. Last, exhibit nine seven five eight, resolution to amend Emmett Utility Extension Project Design, the short Elliot Hendrickson, S E H for sixty-four thousand eight hundred, sponsored by Alderman Arnett and the Public Works Commission.
So moved.
Motion by Arnett. Second by Wetzel. Any comments or questions? Okay, Megan.
Arnett?
Aye.
Wetzel?
Aye.
Molenhauer?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Lampy?
Aye.
Berg?
Aye.
Barts?
Aye.
Blanky?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Lasting agenda is comments, suggestions from citizens present. Anybody else wish to address the council at this time?
Mayor, I have Jeremy Schmidt.
Thank you. My name's Jeremy Schmidt. I live at ten eleven Meadow Street here in Watertown. Recently confirmed, he is a sixth-generation Watertown citizen, on both sides, I believe. So, I'm here with my fellow members from the building of Welcoming Watertown, recently elected as the treasurer for the Welcoming Watertown, and I come from a different angle. I actually work at Community Action Coalition, where every year, twice a year, we do what's called a point-in-time count, where we look for literal homeless individuals who are sleeping outside, sleeping in the vehicle, or placed in a mortuary habitation. This last January, I was involved in that point-in-count, and we found, in Jefferson County, we found thirteen households in one night, on January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five. Eleven of those households were included as seventeen clients, so some were couples, maybe one with a child, and there was also two veterans that we found. I myself completed the point-in-count here in Watertown, which I've done at least twenty times now. I've been working at CAC for eleven-plus years. I found an individual in a laundromat right downtown Watertown. I found two vehicles, people living in vehicles at the Walmart parking lot, and I found another veteran sleeping at a kind of a ravine near the water, in his vehicle. I have done the point-in-count, like I said, twenty times, and this isn't a recent problem. This problem, or this homeless issue, has been happening for many years. I was a caseworker for Jefferson County for a transitional housing program for five years, and many of the individuals that I served were here in Watertown. As of our report on February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, there were currently, at that moment, forty-seven households who were literally homeless in Jefferson County. Those individuals, we follow up every thirty days through our continued, our coordinated entry process, and who are currently sleeping in vehicles or in a shelter provided by another agency, like at a hotel downtown Watertown. We don't have any shelters here for children and families. We don't have shelters to keep somebody warm. I'm here to present this information, to hopefully get a warming shelter, to have another option so that we don't have individuals passing away in the cold. On that night, on January twenty-third, it was approximately twenty-eight degrees, and I believe it was a couple nights before where that female had passed away downtown Watertown. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have Reverend Dr. Christopher Ross.
I'm still Chris Ross, and I still live in Cottage Grove. First Samuel two eight says, "He raises up the poor from the dust, he lifts the needy from the ash heap, to make them sit with princes and inherit a seat of honor. For the pillars of the earth are the lords, and on them he has set the world." First Chronicles sixteen, nineteen through twenty-two says, "When they were few in number, of little account, and strangers in the land, wandering from nation to nation, from one kingdom to another people, he allowed no one to oppress them. He rebuked kings on their account, saying, 'Do not touch my anointed ones; do my prophets no harm.'" Job five sixteen says, "So the poor have hope, and injustice shuts its mouth." Job twenty-nine, fifteen through seventeen says, "I was eyes to the blind and feet to the lame. I was a father to the needy, and I championed the cause of the stranger. I broke the fangs of the unrighteous, and made them drop their prey from their teeth." Psalm nine eighteen says, "For the needy shall not always be forgotten, nor the hope of the poor perish forever." Psalm twelve five says, "Because the poor are despoiled, because the needy groan, I will now rise up, says the Lord. I will place them in the safety for which they long." Psalm fourteen six says, "You would confound the plans of the poor, but the Lord is their refuge." Psalm thirty-five ten says, "All my bones shall say, 'O Lord, who is like you? You deliver the weak from those too strong for them, the weak and needy from those who despoil them.'" Psalm thirty-seven sixteen says, "Better is a little that the righteous person has than the abundance of many wicked." Psalm forty-one one says, "Happier are those who consider the poor; the Lord delivers them in the day of trouble." Psalm sixty-eight five says, "Father of orphans and protector of widows is God in his holy habitation." Psalm sixty-eight ten says, "Your flock found a dwelling in it; in your goodness, O God, you provided for the needy." Psalm seventy-two, three and four say, "May the mountains yield prosperity for the people, and the hills in righteousness. May he defend the cause of the poor of the people, give deliverance to the needy, and crush the oppressor." Psalm seventy-two verses thirteen, verses twelve through fourteen say, "For he delivers the needy when they call, the poor and those who have no helper. He has pity on the weak and the needy, and saves the lives of the needy. From oppression and violence he redeems their life, and precious is their blood in his sight." Psalm eighty-two, three says, "Give justice to the weak and the orphan, maintain the right of the lowly and the destitute." Psalm one oh nine, verses thirty and thirty-one say, "With my mouth I will give great thanks to the Lord; I will praise him in the midst of the throng, for he stands at the right hand of the needy, to save them from those who would condemn them to death." Psalm one twelve nine says, "They have distributed freely; they have given to the poor; their righteousness endures forever; their horn is exalted in honor."
Thank you. That's it? Okay. Mr. Lampy?
Mayor, I'm not sure where it would go on the agenda, but one of the things I'd like to entertain is looking at some of the IT needs of the city, if we could find an appropriate committee to look at that or a special task force.
You want that agenda next time, or what do you?
I'm not making a suggestion, but I think it should be addressed at the council or appointed committee level.
Okay. All right. So, no, we'll put something on the agenda, okay? Okay, I'll look for a motion adjourned, or we could...
I'll make that motion adjourned.
Okay. Motion by Berg?
Second.
Second by Molenhauer. All's in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Thank you.